Good morning, everyone. I would like to call today's October 30th regular county council meeting to order. We will start at nine thirty, pardon me. We will start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight Traditional Territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. The first item we have is the approval of the agenda. And I understand there are two additions to our agenda that came from our last meeting, those tabled items we had at our organizational meeting. So on nine point one, we would like to add the county library board. And nine point two, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six meeting dates. And reports will be coming around should that be approved on our agenda. Are there any further additions or deletions or changes anyone would like to see? You'll move? Okay, thank you. Before we move the, before councillor Chamsik would like to move the approval of the agenda, we do have to go through as per our procedural bylaw to go around the room for councillors to select which items they wish to discuss. And so those items that I know of are two point one, seven point one, seven point two, seven point three, seven point four, eight point one A, eight point two, twelve point, oh pardon me, adding nine point one, nine point two, twelve point one through twelve point seven for the closed session items. Is there any other further additions that would like, councillors would like to discuss? We're all good? Awesome. Does anybody need me to run through the list one more time? Fantastic. So we have a motion on the floor from councillor Chamsik to accept the agenda as discussed. All those in favor? Jack? There we go. Sorry, missed it. There we go. So no opposed? Awesome. Thank you. All right. So the first item we have on our agenda is seven point one, which is on page fifteen of your agenda package. Uh, this is the financial variance report up to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And um, does administration have anything that they would like to mention on the report?
Uh, nothing really to add. Just uh, we kind of did a different report. So that's uh, you see it there. So just, I guess, other than, other than that, nothing additional. Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. Um, I really like the, the changes that have been made to the report. It looks really good, uh, easy to read. I'm really impressed with the highlights as well that have been added to give us an explanation on these different forecasted items, whether they're over or below the budget. I think that's excellent. So thank you very much for that. Um, does anybody have anything that they would like to discuss regarding the financial variance report? Pretty quiet. All right. Well, I do have a couple of questions if I may. Um, I realize that a lot of these are forecasted, but just of, for curiosity's sake, um, when we're looking, for example, under agricultural, um, it mentions that the uh drainage ditch activities have been deferred. Is that just due to running out of time for the season? Just curious.
To the chair, uh, yeah, the basically there's a lot, yeah, but no.
Sorry, just to interrupt, um, we need you to microphone.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the reason for that deferral is there, we need to put a work plan together uh, and to ensure that we have all of our permits in place.
Fantastic. Awesome. Thank you very much. Um, I think just going through some of these that I had highlighted, um, I think that, yeah, pretty much like you say, they're forecasted items. So we will get more of a um clearer picture as we get closer to the end of the year. Um, and I guess we can go through that at budget time as well. So if anybody else doesn't have anything else to ask or questions? Do we have a motion to receive? Deputy Reed Minz has a motion to receive the September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five summary operating and capital financial variance report and investment summary as information. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor? And I see no opposed. Thank you. Item seven point two. This is the policy six one one five mobile devices on page twenty-nine of your agenda package. Does administration like to? Thank you so much.
Thank you and good morning, Madam Chair, members of council. Today before you is a report on the policy six one one five mobile devices. Uh, we have a couple of questions for council on this mobile device policy. It's, it's quite dated. Uh, was uh, written first, first in two thousand and ten and was updated. Uh, however, since that time, uh, the, the price of laptops or mobile devices has gone up, uh, probably double the price. So right now, the way it sits is the policy allows um elected officials to buy their old laptop for fifty dollars. Uh, right now, we're estimating the cost to be around twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, that includes insurance, um, setup, uh, postage, all the other things that takes software that accumulates to about twenty-five hundred dollars. So we, we're asking council for some clarification today on their, on your interpretation of the policy. The way we interpreted is that only uh councillors leaving office get to purchase their laptop, but the ones returning do not. Um, so we just needed some clarification from council on how you wish for us to clarify in a revised policy. And secondly, we'd like to, we're proposing some options for calculating um the, the, the pay, the payback, uh, buyback, sorry, the buyback of a laptop. So we've given you three options there to consider. Um, and once council gives us some guidance, we'll come back with a revised policy.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Does anybody want to weigh in on this particular item? Go ahead, please, Deputy Reed Minz.
I think if I remember right, when we, when we started our, our last term, um, it was this policy was brought forward and it, and it was discussed that at the end of the term, you would, you would be able to purchase your computer at fifty dollars. Uh, kind of gives an enhancement of taking care of your computer a little bit more than, than uh, than, than what some people may. So if I remember right, that's, that's the way it was interpreted, interpreted by myself that, that at the end of the term, we'd get, we could purchase it for fifty dollars and then we would be uh, be getting a new computer at the new, at the new term for, and then everybody is, is all part and parcel the same with, with having, having the brand new computer and uh running. So I think it's a, it's a good policy to bring up and everything, but I think we should be staying with what the policy says. And then if we want to change it for the next term, uh, we can have that discussion, but that, that's my, that's my take on it.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please, councillor Chamsik.
I completely agree when I look at number eight of the policies that to me, it seems pretty clear.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll also weigh in on that. I remember as well, when we began our term in twenty twenty-one, this policy was brought forward and it was explained very clearly to us at that time that at the end of our term, because as term, as we know, and we noticed as we went through on Monday, the term ended and we started a new one, um, that we would have that option to purchase for fifty dollars. Um, I know these laptops, which have been fantastic, um, pardon me, yours is starting to go. So this is the whole concern that I also have. I remember IT mentioning that these are not supported. IT cannot support these particular laptops, which does throw us into a bit of a conundrum should something happen or something go wrong with them. Um, I know that they, in looking at what they possibly were priced at, I didn't pull any invoices, of course, or didn't ask for any invoices to be pulled. But I remember uh Googling this and they were running around about eight hundred to a thousand dollars. So we're still right around in that depreciation of, of that fifty dollars, which I think is better to at least get some revenue from them than none, um, in, in my mind there. Um, what else did I write down for notes? Oh, we did budget in twenty twenty-five for all new laptops as well, so that it is in the budget. It's, it's not that it wasn't in the budget. And when, when we look at our financial um variance report, we're already seeing a forecast of being below budget by over eighty thousand. So it's, it's, you know, kind of a bonus to have that as well that we didn't spend, the legislative services didn't spend as much there. And as it also mentioned in your report, that staff uh usually receive um updated equipment uh for the workplace uh between three to five years. And so we're at four years. So I'm in agreeance as well that this particular policy, um, definitely, as you mentioned, should probably be updated for the new prices. But as it sits today, um, I think it should be executed as it was uh planned for and then uh brought forward again to have that update um at a later date for the new term. But that's what, that's my perspective. Go ahead, please.
All good points. So um, I, I, I understood as well that um, at the end of every term, you could purchase your laptop and, and because they do age out to a point, um, I think that uh it's not terribly important, but I like how Deputy Reed Minz said that it does encourage people to take care of their property, because if you don't and you wreck it during your term, ideally, the county is going to provide you another one anyway. I mean, that could be an accident, but let's hope that that doesn't happen. And um, I do believe that the price um should increase for the buyback as, I mean, depreciation or everything goes up, but I'm not like hard line on that. Um, I guess, uh, I kind of lost my train of thought. I was gonna say, I, I agree with upping the price a bit. Um, I think that that would like be a little bit more reasonable um from people looking in from the outside. But um, I think that at every term, you should be able to buy it and get a new one. Because ideally, I mean, I'm looking at mine and I'm using it. And if it's not, like, it doesn't even click, connect to the internet here anymore. Um, I'm basically uh using it with saved agendas and at home it works, but not here. So I would be getting one now or would I get one in six months? I don't know. I think if it would be simpler if it just changed out every turn.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please, councillor Dowell.
Well, we, we, sorry, we've just started our term here and uh, and could we not uh do this at a policy review later on? Uh, do we have to make a decision today? You know, can we just leave it as is uh? And maybe bring it up at a policy review meeting later on. Uh, we're new here. I'm not really familiar or most of, some of us aren't really familiar with what's happening. So we can probably discuss that amongst each other and bring it back.
Yes, um, we don't have policy review meetings. It would be at the committee of the whole, uh, would be the next uh opportunity to discuss it um as a group. Um, if that's what council would like to do, we could certainly uh forward it to there to have that conversation. Um, but I'm wondering how council also feels about, you know, as you mentioned, yours is starting to fail. Um, and I guess when, when we, we were here in twenty twenty-one, that was kind of, was one of the things that was very uh clear that we would be getting new laptops as well. So go ahead, please.
Sorry, I'll just follow up. I know that I can get a new one at any time. I just, and I don't have to buy it back. I just, I would if I could use it. That's all. I know that we can still go get our new one.
Okay, awesome. All right. So where would council like to go? Is that a tabling motion?
Before we make tabling motions, can I propose or speak? Cause that ends discussion. I, I think we also have to remember that um we're also here to make decisions and it's a bad habit to get started by kicking everything to the future. Administration has asked for something fairly clear and that's um, I, I feel like it's fairly clear and I think we can assign administration to, to modify the policy and bring, bring something back for discussion to a different forum. But I think just kicking it down the road to kick it down the road doesn't work. We've had the agenda for long enough to have read it and thought about it and we need to make decisions. We can't, let's not start with the first motion of the, the term deferring or nothing will get done. And and while I have the floor, I'm going to speak to the, I like the uh, some version of the admin's proposal that there's a depreciated price as time goes on. Because uh, you know, over the last four years, a number of councillors had problems with their mobile device where it failed at some, some point in time. And I think through, you know, no abuse or fault of their own, the, these surfaces are not the most robust uh type of equipment and, and they just, they, they, they quit. So having a, having a system where you can base it on the depreciated value allows somebody who maybe has a failure, uh, you know, twenty-two months from the end of the term to still pay, pay a fair price for the machine if they want to keep it. And, and really, what would the county be doing with it afterward anyway? They're going to start a new term with new councillors and new computers. So it's, it's a win-win. So I, I mean, whatever the policy changes have come, I think that's a sensible program versus this arbitrary two years and fifty bucks. Cause if your computer had failed on November first, two years ago, you would not be able to buy it for fifty bucks today. But you might say, it's still really good and I still really want it. And I, so I, I would encourage us to not table this, but to make a decision, give admin some direction and get moving.
Okay, thank you. Um, Deputy Reed Minz and then councillor Dowell.
I would uh, I would uh be in favor of putting a motion forward to, for, for the end of the term to go by what the policy says.
Uh, end of twenty twenty-five term?
End of twenty twenty-five term, the mobile device must be returned to administrator upon completion of employment or term of office at Athabasca County. A council member at the end of his or her term may purchase his or her device for fifty dollars. And then, and then uh, I'd put that motion forward. And then, then again, we'd all be starting fresh with all brand new computers. And then I really like the idea of uh councillor Hall's about, about actually moving moving an, another motion to, to uh to have a discussion of a possible new, new policy.
But would, would you be comfortable with admin just finding best practices and coming back to us with something?
Yeah, yep, you betcha. Yeah, I like that idea. And then but then at least we're, we're, we're done at, with that motion, we're done at the end of the twenty twenty-five term and then we're going to move on to, to the next term. The next four years, but we're all starting with brand new computers.
Okay. Councillor Dowell? You're okay? All right. So is there any further discussion? We can go forward with the first motion. Um, I'm kind of gonna see if I got it. Uh, that Deputy Reed Minz would like to move that administration um to direct administration to complete, or I'll just read the policy, that um, to direct administration to upon completion of employment or term of office within, with Athabasca County, a council member at the end of his or her term for twenty twenty-five may purchase his or her device for fifty dollars, providing it is more than one year old. Does, is that a sufficient motion that uh, as discussed? It, it's mentioned in the policy one year. Yeah.
Madam Chair, just for some clarification, you want the year twenty twenty-five placed within the policy?
No, this is to go forward.
To give us some guidance.
Yep, got it. For administration to go forward with the um end of the term twenty twenty-five. Uh, according to policy six one one five, that a council member at the end of the term twenty twenty-five may purchase his or her device for fifty dollars. So it's just to direction to go forward with the, the, be able to purchase them and obtain new computers. If that makes sense to everyone. I'm not really sure. Leah, can you please read back that motion and then we'll, we'll wordsmith it a little more so it makes a little more sense, please?
Moved by councillor Minz to direct administration that council members at the end of their term in twenty twenty-five
May purchase.
May purchase their device for fifty dollars, providing it is more than one year old.
Correct. Okay, so every, go ahead, please, councillor.
So, so we're talking, pardon me, we're talking to past, we're not talking to future.
Correct.
Okay, that was my problem. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then we have a secondary motion after this one to bring this policy further for, for other discussion. Correct? Okay, so we'll, we'll deal with the motion one. And I think it's uh clear that everybody understands it as it was written. All right, if we're ready for the vote, all those in favor? We have eight and opposed, one, eight and one. Thank you. And the second motion with regards to the policy is councillor Minz would like to bring policy eight one eight, or pardon me, six one one five. I'm not seeing it properly, six one one five, to a future committee of the whole meeting for further discussion and amendment. We can wordsmith it?
Before we get too crazy down this path, would um, this is, this is not a complicated policy. Could, could we see our way to asking administration to research a few best practices and bring us something back to discuss? Like, I don't think we need to sit down and try to figure it out. We've got a brilliant team. Get us something done based on researching best practices in the region, just bring it back. And I don't think we need to waste time going through committee of the whole on a policy that doesn't even take up a full page. And if they stretch it, I mean, maybe we'll get it to two page and a half. But um, so would it be reasonable to have the motion to direct administration to seek best practices and um to, to revise the policy based on their research and best practices and present to council? And then we can talk briefly about some things you might dream about seeing in it. Uh, but I mean, I think we could do that in, in less than one cycle around the table right now. And for me, I've spoken to it. The only, you know, the biggest thing I think is the, the depreciated scale is a reasonable way to, to um balance the needs of the municipality with disposing of used assets. And otherwise, let them go.
So if I kind of got the gist of it is your motion would be reading, and this isn't for sure, just to wordsmith it, to direct administration to revise policy six one one five as per best practices and bring forward to uh the county council meeting?
I would say to research best practices and revise the policy.
Okay.
Cause best practices are not a thing. It's not a book.
Direct admin to research.
If it were, it'd be so much simpler.
Best practices.
And bring a revised policy to council for discussion and approval.
And bring revised policy six one one five, or bring revised policy, cause it might change the number as per, at the next, pardon me, at the next or up, not next.
To bring it back for proof. I, I'm content to.
At a future county council.
We dump lots on admin. I don't, we, we can't reorganize our priorities. They, they'll fit this in when they have a rainy day.
Okay.
And, and again, because really, we don't need to sort this out. You got four years to make a firm decision on it. If it takes time, it takes time.
Okay. So I'm, I'll try and read this out and hopefully we've got it correct. To direct administration to research best practices regarding mobile devices or regarding the policy. Okay, to direct administration to research best practices regarding policy six one one five and bring a revised policy to a future county council meeting? All right. Does everybody got that? Right on. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor? Thank you. And I see no opposed. Nine and O. Thank you. All righty. Item seven point three, um, page thirty-two of your agenda package. Um, this is a recommendation from um administration that council approved the admin, administration to go out to tender the supply of aggregate for the term of three years with the option to extend for an additional two years. Would you like to take the floor and discuss the report or we can?
Sure.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good morning, uh, chairman and council. Um, so one of the things that the municipality has done and needs to do is uh to get our gravel inventories in place for the next few years. Uh, we'd like to do it on a three-year contract this time with the option to extend. Uh, the last time that we went out to tender was in twenty twenty-three. Uh, this would be for the supply and hauling of our spec gravel. It will be tested uh by our engineering firm. And they would place it in two locations strategically located to uh help reduce the haul distances throughout the municipality. Yeah, the next year, we would add a third location. Uh, it's a new location that we're attempting to get approval from the province on a crown-owned property. So there's a number of permits associated with that. So unlikely we would have that approval in place for this year. That's why we've added it to next year's uh program. So that would give us a third location for stockpiles in addition to our own gravel pits. Uh, right now, we're proposing that the monies would be funded from our reclamation reserve and operated as an inventory item. So as the gravel was hauled out to the roads and build to projects, that reserve would get refunded. Um, we don't have a reserve that is established for this at the time. So that's why we're recommending use temporarily using the gravel reclaim, gravel pit reclamation reserve. But it would be refunded as the gravel was hauled out to the roads and build to projects through that system. Yeah, that's.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions? Please go ahead, councillor Dowell.
Is, is uh, is there a cost saving on this?
Not likely. And so the reason is we don't have um, unfortunately, we don't have vast majority of uh inventory or gravel pit sources of our own. So, you know, we'll, we need to do this in order to get uh, the volumes that we need to accomplish our programs. Um, so I, I guess it, it'll be market value. It, it'll be cheaper, I guess, than just sole sourcing to somebody and, and getting purchasing it that way. But I'm not going to suggest that it's cheaper than producing our own if we had a number of pits that were our own in these same locations. Is that, I'm not sure.
Yeah. So, so are you saying we're short of, we, we short of pits or uh, we haven't got enough gravel?
We are definite, sorry, through the chair. Um, we're definitely short on gravel inventories. Uh, we will, we believe our primary focus over the next few years will be to add significant volumes to our own inventories, whether that be through own inventories, whether that be through purchase uh from private contractors or acquiring uh and identifying and purchasing gravel sources that we operate on our own. All of it will be in play, but yes, we are quite short on county reserves at this time.
Is it because we're not developing these or is it uh?
From my understanding uh is that this is a change in direction, there was a under a previous administration, not this administration, that maybe the feeling was we should be getting out of gravel pit operations. This administration doesn't necessarily feel the same way or share the same perspective. So there was no focus on ensuring that we had long-term aggregate supply for a few years. Uh the reliance was really on going through gravel suppliers locally. Um this administration shares a different perspective is that we're not going anywhere, this municipality will be here for a long time. And it would be prudent to have our own resources in place for the long term.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to expand on that, we I think we probably need to um bring back something to council and brief you all on where we're at with a few of those initiatives and one of the uh one of that would be a closed session item because it deals with land. So uh we probably have some news for council on where we're at with some of that. Uh but we'd like to brief you in a closed session, probably at the November thirteenth meeting. Um and I'm only gonna refine the comments of director Morton on one. You asked if it uh my experience has been if you do go to a bit of a longer term contract, three years. Uh I have seen vendors sharpen their pencils and give us good competitive. That's not to guarantee that it'll be the same moving forward, but I have seen it in the past is if you're uh guaranteeing someone a contract for three years, I've seen very competitive pro- uh prices. Usually with a fuel rider added in, right? It's always the fuel rider gets added in, if fuel goes up, then their costs go up. Otherwise, it's really advantageous to both parties if they're if as long as they're meeting the terms of the contract, they've got a contract for three years. Uh makes everyone pretty competitive, they want that contract.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion, deputy Reed Minz?
Yeah, we could we could talk about this for days, but uh just wondering do a little bit more of a dive in there now that now that there's been some work being done out west on a possible site at uh the Baptiste Island Lake uh lagoon site. It's come to come to my attention and others attentions that there's actually a site that's two miles away from there. That is already a a stockpile site. That uh there could be possibility of a of a lease on that site where where there'd be no lossage of gravel due to the floor of the of the new pit. And I was just wondering if if possibly if that could be looked at?
Madam Chair, if you want to pass that location to us after the meeting, that would not be a good discussion in an open meeting.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that sounds good if if we could do that and then the only other thing you mentioned uh uh director Morton was was using engineers for testing. Do we have to do, we have people in place that uh could gravel gravel test?
We do have individuals who have the ability to test. Um however, you know, we have limited number of staff and uh you know with the change in spec, um my feeling was that we want constant oversight. And uh so putting a staff member there full-time removes him out of the operations of the rest of the department. Um having a third party there with continuous oversight will ensure that we're getting the spec that we've asked for and um you know, it there's a strategic direction to ensure that we're getting less sand in our uh gravel, so my feeling was that this is the best way to do it.
Just engineering costs more and more every time we turn around, so that's that's a lot of the reason why Athabasca County went with with their own testing group and all that is just due to the fact of keeping the cost of the engineers down, but but there again, we're getting into procedures and thank you. I'll we'll talk after.
Sure.
Quick question. The uh these engineers, are they on full time or do they just spot check periodically or what do they do?
It through the chair, um it'll be based off tonnage. So we've tightened up the tonnage requirements of of production, so uh depending on the production being pushed through the crusher, there will be testing done based off production amounts and um I apologize, I don't have the RFP in front of me, I can't tell you exactly what tonnage we had settled on. Uh but the desire was to get more than one test a day, right? So you know, we've tightened up those requirements as well. But our primary objective is, like I said, to get high-quality gravel.
And but the testing is done only when it's being crushed and stockpiled so that we know what our inventory is and what the specs are on that. So his job is done within two or three weeks, is it?
Yeah, it it would be only uh done off the crusher.
Right.
Production, uh it's not stockpile testing, it's done off of the crusher itself while in production.
Okay. Also, another question is the uh I noticed a few years back in some municipalities where they spread right off the crusher, they don't uh stockpile. Is I'm not sure what that all is about, whether or not it's economically feasible or uh times of the year when you shouldn't be out there spreading gravel in the snow and things like that. Um is this, is it uh possible that we do some spreading right off the crusher and some stockpiling or your opinion is to have it stockpiled just so that we have the inventory for when we need it?
Uh through the chair, so there's nothing that restricts us from hauling out to the road from the crusher. The whole point of the stockpile is to ensure that you have more than one year's supply. So we would never be in, hopefully not be in a situation where we're utilizing uh the aggregate as as it's produced entirely. Uh the idea would be, you know, by putting larger quantities together for contractors to bid on. Uh it'll bring the price of the aggregate down uh as well as give us more than one year's supply in a given location, so if we needed it while it's being produced, we could uh absolutely haul directly from the crusher to the road. But the primary objective is to have a source there for more than one year's availability.
Good, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, does anybody else have any questions? Please go ahead, councillor Dowlett.
Before we vote, I'd cer- I'd certainly like to know approximate cost savings.
Okay, I through the chair, I'm I apologize, I maybe misunderstood the first question. Uh CAO Beck has elaborated, you know a three years, definitely a cost savings over one year. I took it as the question was in relation to if we had our own su- gravel supply is tendering it out to us uh private source cheaper. Um so maybe if I could just ask for clarification on what the savings you're referencing or questioning?
Yeah, well, doing uh doing our own and I'd also probably like to know the cost saving on a three-year versus one. You know, if if this is gonna be like hundreds of thousands, you know, I'd like to know, uh you know, if it's a few bucks, it's a can you answer that?
Um so I guess to be blunt, we don't have the aggregate supply of our own right now to uh to do it anyway, so uh nor do we have stockpiles of aggregate, we're we're basically depleted three of our areas this year. Um we don't really have a choice but to go out to tender to get this gravel supply if you want to do your gravel program next year. Um but that being said, there's a long history that indicates as uh CAO Beck has indicated that going multiple years is cheaper than going for a one-year term. Um that one, you know, I can't give you an exact number unless I put out a one-year and a three-year and but um history has shown repeatedly that multiple years uh when folks suppliers have a guarantee they're they're more aggressive in their pricing. Uh they know that work is coming for them for the next three years, that's quite valuable to them. Um but what the difference is between going to a private supply versus if we had the uh our own pits and could do it, I can't give you that number today.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, we do have the price that we got, we tendered for one year in twenty four twenty five. So we could report that to council, so we've got a baseline of what what the last time we tendered for one year is, we can report that to council, I don't have it in front of me, but we could tell you what that was.
And from there, we can figure out what our cost is, can you can you do that for us?
Yeah, we could provide that last tender price for the one-year supply, that was, that's easy, I don't have it, but we we could find it.
And I believe councillor Hall is is also uh waiting to speak, but just so that I have clarity. Um I also understand the earlier we tender, the better it is uh for getting the better price, if I'm not mistaken?
Well, likely, uh madam chair, and uh basically suppliers like to crush in winter. So this is a great winter activity, so um and less so in summer.
Right, sooner the better, okay, thank you, councillor Hall and then councillor Dowlett?
So I I I just heard we don't have our own supply, madam chair, and I I guess I'm just wondering from council, have we I'm having trouble remembering that we've talked about this big shortage in our pits before, like I feel like this is a little bit new to it's new news. And um maybe we touched on it, I don't remember it, but um is this something that's have we have we had, has council had this knowledge that we don't, we are out of gravel before today? That's what I think I just heard. We don't have our own supply.
Uh madam chair, I've been here about two years longer than uh director Morton. Um I think uh we've raised it as a concern to council. I I really wasn't warned of that when I joined the county, that we have a gravel problem. Uh so no one warned me. Um it's certainly become evident to us that we don't have a short, short, medium, or long-term gravel plan. Is that fair to say, director Martin?
Fair, yes.
And I think we identified that in um uh some of our, I think we tabled a list of potential projects with council at one of our last meetings.
Yeah.
And we raised that as we we do need to sharpen our pencils on gravel strategy, we need to get start working on it again, we don't know what happened in the last couple of few years before uh we joined the county, but it didn't look like a lot of work went into planning beyond the next year.
Thank you, and I I do recall the strategy being discussed.
Then uh is this a plan, because I I'm not quite clear based on the comments if it's a plan to to pre-purchase it all at once or to buy as as you need, because we've talked about you know, when we know the work is coming, they'll give us better prices, which to me means sort of a supply on demand or uh you know, an ongoing supply. So can you um can we see clarification, are we buying three years into all at once into a couple of piles or is it gonna be three one-year supplies?
So it it's kind of a combination of all of that, so is it a long-term solution? No, this um are we gonna use all of it every year? Probably not, but it I would say the simplest, the most it would probably last us three years at a given location. Um depending on, you know, how our gravel programs go. Uh it really is, you know, kind of tailored to be a a two-year supply at each place. Um so at the end of the five years, you know, we might have two years left in that pile. So that gives us time to come up with.
So it's not um just because I want to make sure the question is, because it's really a cash flow related question?
Yes.
It's not all coming in on day one, like in Wandering River, we in the last couple of years bought in multi-year supply, hauled it all at once and made one giant hop. Uh I think what I'm hearing is we're gonna have a pile that's a little better than a year, but keep adding to it as we deplete it.
Yeah, the tenders are actually based on sixty-six thousand uh a year uh split between the two locations. Uh to put that into perspective, we use, you know, around a hundred every year. So this would make up sixty-six percent of our gravel supply because we will have to supplement with crushing in our own pits. And it was, it's really been broke down to this, instead of doing a massive haul uh is to keep the size of the stockpile locations down, but ultimately to kind of re-restrict the cash draw out of reserves. Um you know, so we're not seeing huge uh outputs of cash out of our reserves.
Uh madam chair, um I think we'd like the flexibility, if a vendor told us, look, we'd like to provide you three years all in the first year. Um therefore, you're paying the year one price with no escalation, I think we'd look at it because gravel doesn't go bad. And uh as long as it's under lock and key, if you get all three years in the first year. Um and we do have reserves to address it and it's a it's a line item in every budget, it's not like we're gonna stop gravelling, so um that wouldn't be a bad thing whatsoever.
Yeah, and that that flexibility seems reasonable, and that's where the I guess where I was going is to me, this is not reclamation, rec- the reclamation reserve is a capital reserve and it's something you shouldn't touch. If admin wants to do this, we should find a way to take it out of your operating reserve because a big chunk of it is obviously should come out of the one-year first year's current budget because it's current spending. And any of that extra future-based stuff, this is operational money, it comes out of an operational reserve, don't touch reclamation, which is long-term. And I and I know, you know, we'll say money's money in the bank, but we we've set up that for a very specific purpose, it needs to be there when we need it and uh we also don't, there's too much risk of creating additional systems to monitor what gravel is getting spent and how much we have to pay back in payments. I so I would argue, I I don't have any issues with the program except for the reclamation reserve is not the right place to take the cash.
Um and if I just may, noticing on the report, it does mention that the that reserve would be replenished um as.
That's what I just said, then you've got to set up a system to make payments to it and it it's an operational expense, you should allocate operations to operations and capital to capital.
Understood, councillor Dowlett?
Well, I'm still confused, I'd like to know how we ever got to this situation. Bob, I think you you explained it a little bit, but uh uh we should never be here talking about lack of gravel or shortage of gravel. So uh I guess we can't operate without gravel, you know, we have to buy it, purchase it, you you know, we have to, uh but it's just uh kind of, yeah, the reason why is kind of funny to me.
Madam Chair, I'll take a stab at it, um the last five to six years in the county, there's been a tremendous turnover in staff. And uh somewhere along the line, different priorities took over. Um and uh I can't explain, they council of the day must have them working on other things, but not the gravel supply. Um we're back on track, we're trying to say, wow, gravel is almost our, it's one of our number one jobs. Um we've got to take it more seriously, I can't I can't explain the past, we're gonna figure out the future and we're trying to get it on track.
And thank you, administration has really been working hard to to bring the county back on track in several areas, so.
Yeah, I I'd like to thank anybody that's that's working on that uh as well.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hall, or pardon me, hang on, we gotta stop for a minute, I think it was deputy Reed Minz, councillor Hall and and councillor Stasia.
Just a real, real quick.
Uh, what's, what's ended up happening, if I could help, uh, Counselor Deholak out is, is. It's been eight years since you've, you've been on council. At that eight-year mark, uh, before you left, there was a ten-year gravel program, ten, ten-year program that, that council could actually look at. And, and it was being administered and over exactly what our C E O said over. Over uh, six years now, uh, that, that program is, is. Went null and void, uh, and that, and, and, and thank goodness that the, the. New administration is actually looking at it, but that's, that's what's happened is, is it'd be very nice to get back to the ten-year gravel program. And understand where the gravel's coming from, cause Counselor Deholak could see that. Every time it was asked in, in, in one of his meetings from a long time ago, so. That's, hopefully we'll get back to that ten-year. And, and move it along. So I've been hammering the desk for a little bit about the gravel program.
Thank you. Counselor Hall?
Um, I just wanted to suggest to uh my colleagues that this is really a good uh opportunity to, to think about. As we go forward, do council priorities and have those strategic planning discussions. This is one of the topics we really do need to. Be clear about as a group and where it fits in our priorities and provide direction to admin so that we can tell them. We want you to build a ten-year or a fifteen or a twenty-year plan. And I, I think a ten-year detailed plan, but I, I really think ten is way too short. We need to be thinking about the fifty-year time horizon. We're at this table to make generation, generational decisions. And some of those we're never gonna see the fruit of, but we have to make smart choices today for the really long terms of, just as we move ahead and think about strat planning, I, I. Put this on your list of things that we need to, to have a, a discussion about, cause this is. This is obviously our, our, you know, our number-one service to people in the county.
Yep, thank you. And Counselor Stasia.
Thank you. Uh, just out of curiosity, what percentage of this program is uh anticipated to be tendered out? Like, we, I'm assuming we have still some of our own pits operating. And so we're getting some from ourselves and some we should be tendering out. Do you have a rough idea what percentage? And, and what's the status of our other pits? Like, are they just about done, or there's still some deeper down further over?
Uh, through the chair, so the percentage really. We, we kinda, we build a gravel program annually uh based off. You know, need, where we're trying to move, you know, closer to a three-year cycle. Policy says four, but we've increased our budget a little bit this year, trying to. I guess shorten the rotation of how often the roads are gravelled. Uh, so the percentage varies annually depending on which areas we're graveling, how much comes out of which location. So I, I can't really tell you an exact percentage uh of what comes out of each pit. But we really only have two operational pits at this time. Uh, so you know, one of the things you'll see in the budget is a uh line item. You know, to start doing an assessment of the entire county of where gravel reserves might exist. And. Starting there, and then we would implement, you know, an exploration program and. So on from there, and to try and get to, you know, I, I believe the first target is a ten-year. And then the next target would be a thirty-plus, right? And with the ultimate goal of being at fifty. If that's what council decides at their strategic planning session.
I think I heard your question. The purpose of this R F P is to purchase from others the amount. That doesn't mean we can't also mine from our own pits. We can also do that, but we are trying to get at least sixty-six thousand.
Yes.
Uh, purchased from others, and then we could augment as we go if we bring in a crusher and do some in our own pits. But we got some work to do there.
Okay, that's sort of what my question was. I, I just was curious whether we, every year if we have a budget that crushes some of our own and just even stockpiles it. Right there at the pit in case we need in a hurry.
We, we could pro- for the three years, we could end up doing a bit of both. And hopefully we're back into our own pits long-term, but we're not there yet.
But do you, in, based on your inspections, do you think there's still adequate supply in our own pits? Maybe deeper down or further over, or are we just about empty there?
We, we'll provide you an update as we talked about um on some other things that we're working on and.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just before Counselor Hall, I believe, has a motion, um, I would just like to extend, um, I have great confidence in our administration. As to what they have identified and what their plan and, and strategies going forward are, and uh. I understand that, you know, we all need to understand what's happening with regards. I know everybody's, you know, really curious about it. But I, I just have that real good confidence in our administration that they're going to make sure that we're not going to have an issue. Um, they're trying to fix the issue, so, yeah.
So bring focus back to the discussion. Um, the question in front of us really is about whether we will. Provide a motion to approve administration going out for tender, so I would. Make a motion that council approve administration go to tender for the supply of aggregate for the term of three years with the option to extend for an additional two years. And to be funded from operational reserves.
Uh, what's the end? I'm sorry?
And to be funded from operational reserves.
To be funded through operation reserves? Okay. Just making sure I've written that down. Does everybody understand the motion? Counselor Dowling?
Would you be okay if we change that to a one and three?
Um, I would, I would say, uh, if you want a motion on a one-year, it would be better to be a separate motion. To, to provide them authorization for that and to seek admin's opinion on whether that makes sense. Cause they're, they're distinctly different for me. This is, this is a three-year motion, or this is a three-year, three-year proposal, and, and if we think we also would like them to. To do a one-year tender, we should provide separate direction on that, cause it's, it's two distinct questions, so the motion ended up being split anyway.
Well. Yeah, but I, I would almost think, you know, then we'd see the difference between a one and a three.
So, Madam Reeve, it's a procedural question. Um, if, if my colleague wants to amend the motion, you can. I will tell you upfront, I will move to split it. It's, it's two distinct questions, and they're both valid questions, and I think they're both worth testing on the floor. I just don't think it fits inside of this one, cause it's too distinct.
I would also recommend it to be two different questions as well.
Yeah, the chair, I'm sure will give you the opportunity to move a motion to go for a one-year tender after this.
Counselor Dowling, would you like to add that as an amendment, or would you like to have a secondary motion?
Well, I'll, I'll make it as a secondary motion.
All right, so we'll, we'll do the first motion first, and I think if everyone's ready for that first motion. Counselor Hall would like to recommend that council approve the admin- that administration, uh, go out to tender for the supply of aggregate. For uh, for the three, term of three years with the option to extend for an additional two years and to be funded through operational reserves. I think I have that correct, Counselor Hall? Okay, are we ready for that uh question? All those in favor? And I see nine and no opposed. Okay, thank you. And the secondary motion from Counselor Dowlick would be.
I'd like to move that authorize uh administration to go tender uh. Uh, the gravel for a, a one-year.
Okay, a one-year term?
One-year term.
Okay. And funded through.
The operational.
Operational reserves, okay?
But a one-year it has to be.
Sorry?
But a one-year it has to be, cause you've gone down as you go.
Okay, he's saying one year has to be going through operational reserves.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Does everybody understand the motion? Please, go ahead.
Uh, just from an administrative question to the chair. So would this be in addition to the three-year?
Yeah, that's my question too. So if you both, if you pass both motions, so we're gonna tender out two different purchases. So we could be buying, for next year, we could be buying two years with a gravel. Um, which is fine, cause gravel doesn't go bad, but in the first year you're buying two years, and then the other one. You would still be getting the second and third year with an option for two. But once you go to tender, um, it's a legal process. Whoever's the lowest bid gets the work as long as they comply, so. So we're okay with that, but it means we're, we're buying two years with gravel the first year.
Well, yeah, that was my, I was thinking of, you know, uh, doing them both together, uh, it might have made it easier. But if that's your feelings, I'm just thinking, maybe I'm gonna withdraw that motion for now.
Okay. Unanimously, I think, is everybody satisfied with withdrawing that motion unanimously? Yeah. Okay, all right, so we'll withdraw that for now, but it's good, good thought, right? We can always have that conversation again. All right.
Just to get back to, to Counselor Deholak, I think, I think what you're gonna find is the, the three-year, three-year uh. Um, contract. You, you're just looking at the difference in money, right?
No, uh, it, it's not only the, it's the commitment. You know, what do we open up a pit and we're able to gravel and uh. You know, we can't commit ourselves to uh three years, a supply of three years. I wouldn't want to if we can get our own pits going in two years or in one year.
It does, it does save us gravel though. Yeah, extends our gravel, so if we, that, 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 that is the positive end of it, eh?
But it all comes down to money too.
Okay, I'm, instead of doing the cross-table, I'm going to transfer this over to the C E O.
Uh, if the risk is we have too much gravel in a pile somewhere, that's a risk I, I would absolutely advise council to take.
Right.
If we haven't had that luxury in a long time, and for us to have a mountain of gravel somewhere. Um, it's called inventory. It doesn't go bad, and it puts us in a great position.
Right.
Uh, cause we use it every year. And sometimes when you have a mountain of it, you've paid a lower price early up front, and then it's there, so I hear what you're saying. Um, it's about cash flow, uh, but it's also a good strategic purpose.
Yeah. So I think, I think this will be a conversation that will be coming back, and I appreciate the conversation at the table. Um, this will be a, a continuous thing until we get our gravel plan all in play and our strategic plan all in play, but. I appreciate the conversation, but we're gonna move on. I think we're ready to go. Awesome. Okay, thanks, folks. We have, thank you very much. We have the next item, seven point four, which is on page thirty-four of your agenda package, the R M A Fall twenty-twenty-five. Um, resolutions. I mainly ask for this one to be put on the agenda for discussion, just in case um there are any questions that council. Um, are looking at through these and would like to uh bring forward to the mic at the Army. And you do have that opportunity to go to the mic and ask questions. Uh, with regards to the resolutions for clarity purposes or um any of those types of things, so. Just curious if, if that's, if council would like to have anything uh discussed with regards to the resolutions that are coming towards Army.
Go ahead, please. I have a quick question. On Resolution nine twenty-nine or twenty-five F, um, is there a difference between um? Settlements versus uh hamlet status prior to nineteen oh five?
And that's, yeah, I'm not sure if the C E O can answer it. So this is on page fifty-four of your agenda package, Resolution nine dash two-five F. Uh, recognition of historical hamlets to enable provincial funding eligibility. And I'm not sure if that's something we can answer here or not, but um if C E O might be familiar with the difference between.
Yeah, settlements or. Being to get some clarity on, beyond definitions. Thank you, Frank.
Oh, beyond definition?
Yeah.
And I mean, it's a tricky one, because we might, this might be having to be asked at R M A itself. Oh, yeah, go ahead and.
Okay, um, thank you, Madam Chair. I think it explains it a little bit. Uh, Carston County has a few hamlets that do not qualify for funding because of their lot sizes, so um. They were historically thought of as hamlets, but when uh the government of Alberta brought in hamlet funding to help out municipalities. They established criteria. Not every. So we might have other settlements, we might, might not, um, that don't meet the criteria that the province put in. But from our perspective, we, they might have been thought of as historical hamlets. We don't title them hamlets, but. Um, I can't think of any in our jurisdiction, but I can think of others in other jurisdictions where they don't qualify for a hamlet, but. One time it was almost a small town, um, but that was a hundred years ago plus, so. Uh, and Cardston County says in theirs, it was, the lot sizes itself don't qualify uh for, under the hamlet funding from Alberta. The Alberta government, so uh they're asking for expanded uh criteria to at least call them hamlets for funding purposes. That's all.
Counselor Hall?
Is, is there a C E O maybe could clarify for council if hamlet status means anything today under the M G A? Cause I. I thought that generally all the funding that was tied to hamlets didn't mean anything, and. Before he answers that, the other statement I would make is, to me, the idea of only going to historical hamlets is a problem. If you wanna do this, then. Everything should qualify, uh, if it's only, you know, if it's based on lot sizes, Century Estates would be a hamlet. Uh, except for the lot sizes. Right? We have other places that we call hamlets that are actually, don't meet the criteria anymore, but we still call them hamlets because they used to be a hamlet, like. Donatville, which has, I think, as many as one house. Right?
Right, Madam Chair, I, I don't have that definition in front of me. We can get it for council, but it was a. Uh, it was a mix of uh residential and commercial uses, uh, uh. Minimum, minimum size of the area. There were a number of different criteria that the Alberta government put on. And I'm not even sure if it's in the act anymore, but it might be in their funding formulas, and I. I think historically at one time, there were specific funding programs for hamlets. And those have changed. Uh, you know, there used to be, before STIP, there used to be another program with another acronym that I can't remember. And it was specifically for roads in hamlets, uh, roads and sidewalks. That's kind of disappeared, so. You're right. Hamlet status might not really help too many people with funding any longer, but there might be a few programs still around, so. If council wants a bunch of research on hamlets, we could certainly go into it, and otherwise this isn't really our resolution.
Yeah. Yeah. Go ahead, please.
Thought on that, um, and that's where, yeah, hamlets, I mean, it's more. It, it, to me, it's, it's one of those things that I think is a, is a moot point, cause they don't, they don't get treated special anyway. Is my memory of how that works, but to qualify today, you have to be less than, lots less than one acre, has to be a certain number and at least one commercial. As, um, cause we, you know, new folks at the table, I think. One of the problems that I, I wanna share that I think, you know, we see at R M A is. We, we should think carefully, like, there's this collegial approach where everybody wants to support everybody and approve stuff, and a lot of R M A resolutions get approved. R M A has a mountain of resolutions that they're on the books, and they all get attention from R M A. I think as a council and as a, as a collective of rural municipalities, we need to be a lot more selective. If it's a truly provincial issue, it's an R M A issue. If it's a minor issue in the bottom. Corner of the province or the middle section, or that's, that's a regional issue that does not necessarily need R M A. And so I, I think we wanna be careful about like this whopping approval level and stuff. Um, and um, and so we, we should be. Voting no to more things is what I wanna say. And so there is one on uh the, the threshold for voting, and, and that'll be an interesting one to see where that discussion. That discussion comes, comes through. But um, what I would encourage you to think about as you're going is, is this really a provincial issue? Cause special interest stuff, in my opinion, has no place in R M A advocacy. We need those guys doing the, the, the critical work. Uh, for, for all of uh Royal Alberta.
Thank you. Uh, and this is exactly what the purpose was for um this conversation, is to hear some of these comments and opinions. Um, and I mean, exactly what you mentioned is it a provincial issue. I'm looking at page forty-nine of our package for Resolution six dash. Six dash two-five F, increased enforcement in rural Alberta to deter rural, rural crime. Um, again, the municipalities also, you know, have their rural crime associations, their crime prevention associations, so. You know, when you look at something. you know, when you look at something like that, are we asking the provincial government to pay for increased enforcement, or is that a download on municipalities? Uh, as well, right? So those are things we also need to consider is who's gonna pick up the dime for some of these um, resolutions that people are wanting to put forward, and are we satisfied with the enforcement that we may have in our own, um, municipality?
Be careful what you ask for.
Yeah.
I got a solution right now for this one, and it's you pay more.
Yeah.
Like that, if I was a minister, I could have that done by lunch.
There you go, and that's exactly it. You know, are these municipalities expecting the province to pay for that enhancement, or is that, you know, further download? So these are the types of things that, you know, are are excellent to have these conversations and 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 bring it to light for people to really think about and provide their opinions, and I appreciate that conversation. Is there anyone else that would like to weigh in on this particular item? Um, I think the recommendation here was to receive the R M A Fall twenty twenty-five submitted resolutions as information. Does anybody want to own that, um, motion? Counselor Kapitaniuk would like to move to receive the R M A Fall twenty twenty-five submitted resolutions as information. All those in favor? And I see no opposed. Thank you. That's nine and oh.
Madam Chair, I just thought I'd give an update on, we, we received feedback from the minister. We had requested a minister uh, of, uh, transportation and economic corridors for a meeting, and unfortunately, they could not accommodate it. Just thought I'd update.
Okay. They're busy people. But the one thing too about that is we're nice and close to the city, that if we do want to have that meeting and and we can always do that, um, outside of the Army, which also might be more effective. In the, in that, right? Okay, so we are next item up, and I think maybe I'm looking at the time to, yep, just looking at that. If we can take a ten-minute break, please. Uh, we'll recess until, time if I got on my computer here, ten forty, ten fifty. Thank you very much, everyone. I think we're ready to go. If I'm not mistaken, we're ready to go again. We are back from our recess. We are at item eight point one A, Community Event Calendars. Page one eleven of your agenda package. Are there any additions anybody has for the event? Go ahead, please, Counselor Kapitaniuk.
Um, Friday, November twenty-eighth is Moonlight Madness in Athabasca. I don't have to list all the events, cuz they'll be all over the newspaper and Facebook, but Santa Parade, fireworks, all that jazz. And, um, I also have the twenty, sorry, twenty, November twentieth and twenty-first, I believe. Uh, let me just look at my calendar again. Is that Friday and Saturday?
Thursday, the twentieth and the twenty-first is Thursday, Friday.
Okay, sorry, Friday and Saturday, so the twenty-first, twenty-second, November? Is, um, Athabasca Follies was just announced, round two. So if you missed the first uh, show, which was what, last year or a year before? It was phenomenal, and it is a, uh, uh, vignettes, like, uh, plays all written by the actors and are all local, and it's all local comedy, so jokes based on where we live. And it's quite, quite good. Athabasca Folly, if you have tickets, they're on sale now, and they sold out very early last time, so, your tickets are valid drug mark.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Awesome. Counselor Chamsy?
Um, November seventh, Grassland Schools having their Remembrance Day Ceremony, so it is open to the public. Uh, the fifteenth, Atmore is having their craft show, Christmas Craft Show, ten to four. I also seen that, uh, on the fifteenth, Rochester is having a harvest supper at six thirty. On the eighteenth is the Atmore A G M for their, uh, Community League. The twenty-fourth is Grassland, uh, Egg Society Meeting. You want me to keep going?
We, you might have to send these in, you know, it might be easier to send them to Leah.
December first is a Grassland A G M. And then, uh, fifth is, uh, the Atmore Community Supper, also open to, uh, public. And then the sixth is, uh, at the Grassland Egg Call, a comedy show. There's, uh, Cold Plate and, uh, comedians as well.
Fantastic. Oh, I'm glad to hear we're getting a lot of laughs coming up. That's awesome. Counselor Alec?
Uh, yes, November first is, uh, there'll be a convoy coming to, uh, Athabasca from, uh, to Boyle, Grassland, uh, Athabasca, it'll be a part of, you know, very much.
That's fantastic. Do you have a time by any chance?
Leaving Boyle, a peanut.
I can check right now.
Leaving Boyle?
Uh, yeah, I believe they are meeting at, uh, the seed cleaning plant, aren't they? Okay, right here, truck drive nine AM. Um, Boyle Grassland Riverfront. Yeah, they're meeting in Bo- in Boyle, and I'm pretty sure it's at the seed cleaning plant, but I can, yeah.
Railroad Avenue, nine AM Boyle. Yeah, okay, thank you. Any further, Counselor Chisen, and then, uh, Counselor, what, Callum?
Um, Christmas Magic in Boyle is December fifth, so the Boylan District Chamber Promise is putting that on. Um, as well as the Christmas concert is in conjunction with that.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. Do you have times for those?
It looks like seven o'clock, um, and then the Christmas concert is also at seven.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Okay, Counselor Callum?
November fourteenth, at the Richmond Park Hall, there's an adult games night being hosted from seven till nine, and snacks, tea and coffee are provided.
Awesome. Fantastic. Does anybody else have anything further? I've got a few to add myself. I'll go ahead and add the few that, um, I would like to invite, uh, the public as well as council to also check out, uh, Athabasca Region Tourism Events Calendar. It's online. Um, those, uh, that website will also accept all your events to add to that particular calendar, which is very helpful for the community and a good place to, uh, bring people to the website that we would love to promote more of. Um, I also, um, will invite people to check out the Athabasca, uh, Native Friendship Center. They have regular calendars posted as well on their Facebook page. I'll give you the update. I did send in the November calendar for the next meeting, but I'll give you the update on what's happening. Um, just for, uh, the beginning of November here, um, we have the Seniors Bingo on November sixth at the Native Friendship Center from one to three. They also have on November seventh, um, a Remembrance Day event from two to three. And then there is May Tea Week happening at, um, the Native Friendship Center. That's beginning on November tenth. So on the tenth, there'll be the Northern Light Square Dancers at one P M. On the twelfth, there'll be May Tea jigging. I'm not sure of the time, but again, you can check that out on Facebook, um, with regards to their calendar. There is a May Tea Workshop on the thirteenth from one till three. On the fourteenth of November, there is the May Tea Beef and Barley Soup and Bannock, um, as a luncheon from eleven thirty to one thirty. And also on the fifteenth, there is a ribbon skirt workshop from ten AM to three PM. But again, those, um, I really invite everybody to to check out those calendars, um, uh, online as well as on Facebook. Um, there is a lot of, this, there's no shortage of events in our community, and that's pretty cool to see for such a, a small area, so. Has any, go ahead, please, Counselor Chisen.
I gave you the wrong time for that Christmas magic. It actually starts at three thirty.
Okay, three thirty. Awesome. Thank you very much. And also, I guess if we have a bunch of these, um, feel free to send them into, to Leah ahead of time, so she's not trying to keep up with all of that, so, um, if everybody can do that today, that would be great, um, and be handy for her. Awesome. So I guess, do we have a motion to, now, uh, Deputy Reed Minz would like to put the motion forward to, um, receive the calendars as, the event calendars as discussed. All those in favor?
And are there any opposed? That's nine and oh. Thank you. Did you have an addition?
No.
Okay. Alrighty. Eight point two is the next item, which is our counselor meeting calendars. That is on page one twenty-two of your agenda package. Um, I'll just go ahead, please, Councilor.
Madam Chair, I propose we table this motion until after nine point two.
Until after nine point two. Sounds like a plan. Tabling motions aren't debatable, so all those in favor? And I s- any opposed? Right, so that's nine and oh. We're going to move. Let's just put that down after nine point two, so I don't forget. Alright, we do have um, the two additions. I think we're handed out to everybody. I'm just gonna set this aside, so I don't lose where I'm at. And we have nine point one, which is the County Library Board. Um, this is to appoint the following uh, County Library Board members. It's mentioned here, um, Councilor Chamsik, uh, Councilor Cody uh, Calhoun, Member Wanda Malot, uh, Member Kathy Hogarth, and Member Jennifer Oco. Um, this was asked to be tabled, so I'll turn this over to administration. Administration, nope, nothing there. Alright. So I think as everybody has had a chance to read the report, um, as per the Libraries Act, council must pass a resolution appointing the members. And the following motion, of course, was made at our October twenty-eighth organizational meeting um, that we tabled this to this meeting. And as per policy eight two oh six, appointments to committee and board section five to be considered for a member at large position, a former elected official must wait one year from the date of retirement from elected office. Councilor Hall?
Uh, through the chair, wondering uh, if Admin had a comment on the terms ending October twenty-seven, if there was uh, some reasoning behind not staggering those out over multiple years that I just can't remember? Like, why wouldn't do twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Why? Um, can, if we can just um, repeat the question. It was basically to...
Why, why they're not staggered? Rather than having three public members expire once?
If you don't...
The question was... The question was to administration.
Madam Chair, I'll defer to uh, Councilor Chamsik.
Thank you.
We have been uh, sorry about that. Uh, we've been working on um, a better terms of reference in having those stated years like most of our other committees. Uh, so that in the future that we have a rollover, because the minimum requirement is five and up to ten. And it would just be good to have that redundant um, rollover or additions with uh, term limits. It's still things being worked on within the committee.
So the question was, uh, why these ones aren't staggered?
Uh, Madam Chair, I don't have an answer. Um, I could tell you, I don't believe we have a great terms of reference or bylaw for establishing our library board. My experience in other municipalities um, that have library boards, generally, the selection of the uh, board members is handled by the library board. And then they send a memo to us to take to council recommending who they've selected. I believe that's kind of how it happens here as well. So um, if we're following that same model, whether or not it matches our bylaw, we don't have a whole lot of ba- uh, administration doesn't have a whole lot of role. So I don't have an answer for you.
Thank you.
I'll move the recommended motion.
Okay, Councilor Hall? So the motion in, from Councilor Hall is to appoint the uh, following uh, to the County Library Board, Board as recommended. If we're ready for that, no further discussion. If we're ready for the question, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Thank you. That's nine and oh. Alright, that was nine point one, and nine point two is the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six meeting dates. Stay with me here. This again was a handout that we were given for the uh, added item on the agenda. Um, and I'll just quickly go through. The recommendation here is that council decide if they would like to revise the meeting dates. And if so, schedule the meeting dates by council resolution until the end of March twenty twenty-six. And to direct administration to amend the procedural bylaw and bring it back to a future regular county council meeting for consideration. So I believe this was um, Councilor Capitan's suggestion that we move to every second, well, the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday, rather than the second Tuesday and the fourth Thursday. Yeah, right? Um, so as, of course, as it mentions in the background, did administration want to weigh in? Otherwise, I'm just gonna go through the report. I'll just go through the report. Um, so the background here is as per our procedural bylaw, uh, apart from statutory meetings, the regular meetings of council, like as we mentioned, were the second Tuesday, the last Thursday of each month. Um, did you want to stick with the last Thursday or the fourth Thursday?
I think second and fourth.
Second and fourth. Okay.
Clearer for everyone.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then, of course, it mentions unless authorized by resolution of council, all council meetings will commence at nine thirty. And if council changes the date, time, or place of a regularly scheduled meeting, the municipality must give at least twenty-four hours notice, I think, as we all know that. So the discussion portion of the report was uh, to discuss that possibility of revising the dates. Um, as mentioned on our organizational meeting, moved by Councilor Capitan to table that item. This is where we are today. Where's everybody at? There you go.
Sorry, before I answer your question, I'll uh, through the chair to Admin, is the second and fourth clearer? Or does it affect you in any way that, than the second and last? Because sometimes there's that five weeks, so I was thinking clarity is second and fourth. It's good for you?
Nope, second and fourth would work.
Clear, the better for me. Yep.
There you go. Um, I'll just throw it out there. Um, thank you for bringing this forward.
Madam Chair, just uh, Ms. Blair tells me that the schedule that's attached references the second and last. So if it says second and fourth, that schedule would change a little bit, and we could just send out that schedule back to council.
Okay, perfect. That's my extra effort. Thank you.
No, that's awesome. As I was going through this and thinking about it as well, there's not a whole lot of difference between the fourth and the last that I found. There was very little, but I really liked it, and thank you for bringing it up. Um, you know, because it also helps us on long weekends. Big time not to come flying in. It helps administration, I hope, as well, that, you know, we don't fly in here on a, on a Tuesday on a long weekend. So I think that that's fantastic. I really like that as well. So the motion here would be, Councilor Capitan?
Uh, so I, I think we're just changing.
To revise the meeting dates to the second and last, or fourth, fourth Thurs- fourth Thursday? Okay.
Yeah, like, that's only going to change to second, fourth, Thursday.
Now, it does mention schedule the meeting dates by council resolution till the end of March twenty twenty-six. Do you want to go further?
Um, should. As per the council.
As... Okay. For the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six calendar here? Is that fair? Because I think this one goes up to October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six, to the organizational meeting? October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-six?
Let's see what.
Okay. Okay, so the motion, if I understand it... The motion, if I understand it, that council uh, would like to revise the meeting dates to be the second and fourth Thursday and schedule the meeting dates uh, by uh, to the end of October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six.
Could it just be, could you simplify that whole works just to be, to schedule as presented in this package?
Well, this one shows as Thursday, the last Thursday in this particular uh, schedule, so it would have to be revised. Alright, so do I need to run that through that motion again, Ms. Leah? Did you?
I propose that as we're looking at this, we do an amendment in August, and I don't know what everybody else's days are like, but July and August, we have only two meetings, so um, if we... The la- that last timeframe in August is often when parents are busy, you know, doing stuff with their kids, trying to get ready for going back to school, and I'm wondering if it would make sense to make the August meeting on the twentieth instead of the twenty-seventh, simply to create that space at the end when um, families might be taking that last.
I don't have a calendar on your phone. What is the twenty-seventh? Is that the fourth last or the fourth Thursday?
It's both.
We, uh, and what I can be, sorry, we must have a fault.
Did my microphone touch?
I I heard Councilor Hall was suggesting that we adjust the August meeting to accommodate um, the last week for being back to school week, kind of. And just upping it at our decision.
So we would go to August twentieth rather than our, but then that puts it where we have the this, we would have back-to-back meetings, thirteenth and the twentieth. Oh, no, we're not.
We only have one.
Very good. Got it. Okay.
Twenty-fifth?
So August twentieth?
Instead of the twenty-seventh, sure.
Twenty twenty-six.
Good idea. Good catch.
There you go. Everybody's working it. Okay. So I guess the motion then would actually read that council would like to revise the meeting ba- dates to be the second and fourth Thursday with the exception of August.
Where it will fall on the third Thursday.
Where it will fall on the third Thursday.
Yeah, yeah.
And up until the October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six. Or maybe daughter. Is that fair?
That's excellent.
Everybody understands it all? We're all good? All those in favor? Any opposed? None. Thank you very much. Well done. So then we will go back now to our counselor. Oops, sorry. Count... Oh, pardon me, go on. Go ahead, please.
Sorry, uh, I don't see anything at the beginning of August.
No, we don't have, we only have one meeting in July, one meeting in August, and one meeting in December that we passed at the organization.
Yeah, got it. Thanks.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, even though you didn't pass the second recommendation, we, we're okay. We're, we're gonna bring back the procedural bylaw to amend it, so either way, we're, we're bringing it back because it has to be amended now.
Would you like a motion? You're, you're good to go. Administration is, I apologize. I'm just so excited about this whole changed. I think it's excellent. So thank you for that. Yeah, that's a great catch. Alrighty, so we're gonna bounce back to eight point two, the meeting calendars for November and December. Just gonna bring that one over. Um, does anybody? Would anybody like to begin? I've got a few things to mention. Okay, I'll start. Um, we have, coming up, we have a letter here that we received from um, Mr. Brian Scott with the Royal Canadian Legion. Um, that the Legion is coordinating their annual Remembrance Day service to be held on November eleventh, commencing at nine forty-five AM. And he has invited uh, the Reeve to invite uh, and bring greetings and say a few words on behalf of the county. So that would be added to our um, calendar as well. Um, I understand there has been a request uh, possibly coming from the Boyle Legion, but it hasn't come in as a formal request as of yet, so we'll wait for that, but it is happening on in Boyle, correct?
Right.
Yep. Do you have a time that they? You don't have a time yet. So more information to come, but Boyle will also be hosting a uh, Remembrance Day Ceremony. Um, I was also uh, texted, um, actually not texted, called on yesterday, I guess it was. Alberta Council has invited um, myself to do a reception at the Alberta Council offices for women in politics on the second of November, three to five thirty. Unfortunately, I cannot attend. Um, and I'm not sure, I don't know if Deputy Reed Minz would really like to go to Women in Politics, but
The second of November.
The second, second of November, this Sunday coming. Yeah. Would you like to attend that? Okay.
I surprised.
I know. Yeah, so I'll send you all the information as well as the contact, okay? And thank you for being able to take that on. Fantastic. I appreciate that. Alright, and we are looking at um, on the fourth of November, it mentions here that we have the Canafric Social Function, which the town uh, of Athabasca is hosting. Uh, the Reeve and the Economic Development Officer was invited as well as um, our MP Shannon Stubbs and MLA Glenn Van Dyken. Um, I will be attending that. I did send out some information on what Canafric is all about to our new counselors, so hopefully have that, and I'll bring back a report and um, some information on what has happened there. Um, and also on the twenty-seventh, just to throw it out there, it's up to uh, council how they would like to um, handle the FCSS conference that's in Edmonton, um, whether or not you would be going. And if you are going, are you okay to miss the MPC and County Council meeting? Or would you like us to try and reschedule that so that you don't miss if you are attending? Is there one or two? Yeah, there's two.
Two? Who else is on with me?
Me. Yeah.
Oh, you are too. Okay. Yeah, I was, actually, I was gonna ask for clarification on that because I'm, I'm not really familiar with FCSS at this point. I haven't been to any of their meetings. So I don't know if it's relevant for me to attend the conference at this point, or perhaps next year. Uh, and then I didn't know whether I need um, you know, council approval for going to that convention if I do go. What's the clarification on that?
If it's on the calendar and, and we accept the calendar.
Okay, so.
Yeah, please, I'll interject as well. You have a, a, a conference budget. You can actually schedule uh, or say what you like, uh, without council approval as well, as long as it's, it's applicable, applicable to the job in some way.
Would your suggestion be that it would be beneficial for us to go, being new to the board?
We will, I will, I will confer, defer to Councilor Chamsik.
Um, having attended the last four years, I found it extremely beneficial. Uh, Debbie runs a really tight ship. There's a lot of advocacy that goes on at those tables. Mr. Van Dyken usually is in attendance as well. Um, I found it always extremely beneficial to go.
And I think you would enjoy it. There's a lot of learning happening there that would really s- springboard into your next meeting.
So do we, would we have enough here for a quorum if we both missed your MPC? Okay.
MPC and County Council.
Oh.
Okay.
So we can, if you, if you prefer, we can, all you can put it out there that you would like us to move the meeting to the twenty-fifth, the MPC and the County Council, uh, if it's works for administration. If not, we're good to go to leave it here, and the seven of us will, will carry forward.
You're welcome.
I'm fine with leaving things ours, as if you guys are good with all the rest in attendance.
Hey. You're satisfied with that? You can also watch it on YouTube. Awesome. Okay, so we've got that one sorted out, and then December, uh, on our calendar, we have the twenty-fifth of December. I don't know about you, but I'm not gonna be here on the twenty-fifth. Um, right? Oh, yeah. Right? So I'm recommending, and I think that we mentioned it already, that there'd be one meeting in December. Um, so I'm assuming that the, the nine thirty County Council meeting on the twenty-fifth would be canceled. And we could possibly move the MPC meeting to the same day as the Cow Meeting, Committee of the Whole Meeting on the sixteenth. I'm wondering how, how administration feels about that as well as council. Okay. Sure, that um, if we could move MPC to um, the sixteenth of December, the same day as Committee of the Whole. And, and of course, we don't have Director Wilkinson to weigh in, but sure. I don't know. Well, it depends on how big, because that's our first Committee of the Whole meeting that we'll have had for few months. We might want to do it beforehand, maybe nine AM? If, if that is, works for everyone. Councilor Hall?
Just think we want to be careful about scheduling like firm start times in the afternoon, because on a day like today, it's possible we would be done by twelve. I mean, today we've got a few um, closed session items, so we're not likely to be, but the, the idea that we end up with a large gap in the middle of the day, I I'd rather have us word it in a way that we, because I think we could start late, but we, there's generally the view we can't start early. But maybe the CIO can provide advice if I'm wrong on that. I just...
We're happy to accommodate whatever council would like. Um, I think we got used to MPC meetings taking five minutes, and after a while, they worked, so we didn't know when to start meetings. So the suggestion was maybe we need to schedule them immediately following council meetings at one PM. If council wants us to try the nine P, nine AM thing again, we're happy to do so. It makes no difference to us.
I just have a small feeling the Committee of the Whole will be a little bit longer this, for the first one, for everybody who has, has new, um... Yeah, it should be done at eleven. Go ahead, please, Councilor Chisen.
Can we not move the MPC meeting to like our meeting on the eleventh after? The same format?
The only thing is, is there's a certain timeline for MPC also, I think. Like, you can't move it too close.
Madam Chair, from, from the time we have a... Madam Chair, from the time we have a complete application for some appu- uh things, we must render a decision within sixty days. That's why it's always pushed to a certain date. Otherwise, they're deemed refused, which is not what we want to do.
We also play a time to figure this out. I propose we don't have to worry about the MPC one today. We can wait for the administration and the chair to to propose it to council the next meeting.
Sounds good. But I'm assuming we will couns- cancel the county meeting on the twenty-fifth?
There, it's already canceled because we approved it under nine point two.
Thank you. Okay, and of course, we have some shifts that will happen with regards to the uh resolution, of course, for the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday. Um I also received a letter from uh Portage College Board of Governors. Uh they would like to take the opportunity uh to thank us for their for our ongoing support. And um would like to extend an invitation to all of us uh for council and uh to meet their board and administration. And so I will forward this to everyone. The dates, of course, October twenty-third is not going to happen. But there are two other dates for consideration and we will discuss this at a at a secondary meeting, January fifteenth twenty twenty-six or March nineteen, twenty twenty-six. There's also April sixteen, a May fourteenth and June eighteenth, so I will forward this to everyone. And we will figure out amongst ourselves um what date would work best, okay? So just as a heads up on that one as well, and if anybody has seen the uh upcoming municipal law seminars are February sixth in Edmonton, uh Reynolds, Mirth, Richards and Farmer is hosting one. Um so that's something else for people to consider again on a future calendar for February sixth, twenty twenty-six. And other than that, I I don't have any other changes uh here. Anybody else? Go ahead, please councillor Chamzick.
Um just uh December eighth should be the FCS S meeting. And then um on December sixteenth should be Boyle Library and the eighteenth Town Library.
Alrighty, thank you. So FCS S meeting, what time?
Nine ten.
Ten. Ten AM and Town Library time? Seven PM and.
No, the Boyle seven. And the Town six.
Town is six, Boyle is seven. Okay. Awesome.
I'm just curious where the FCS S meeting is, is it here? Yes.
Yep. Go ahead, please councillor Hall.
Uh two questions, there's um the local authorities course on the nineteenth, is that, do we know a time for that? Is that in the morning, evening? It's on a Friday.
It's during the day, uh madam Chair, I'll.
Uh that's close enough for me. I just wanted to know if I needed to plan my Friday evening.
It's a daytime meeting and the email actually didn't say and it I don't believe that we got the exact location other than in Boyle. So we'll get that clarified.
Okay, but but that that at least allows us to plan. Evening or day? The other thing, uh I can tell you, the multiplex meeting will be canceled on the twenty-fourth and rescheduled because uh multiple board members will have a conflict on that day.
Okay, that will be rescheduled, okay, and that's November. Okay. Um. Do we have any more points? Anybody else need to clarify any points? We're good? So do we have a motion?
I will move to uh receive the calendars.
As discussed?
Yep.
The motion on the floor is to receive the calendars as discussed. If all of you is ready, all those in favor? And are there any opposed? It's nine and oh, thank you. Alright, so we are.
Motion to enter closed session.
Councillor Hall would like to have put the motion forward, please. Uh the motion on the floor would be to go into closed session, all those in favor? Any opposed? Nine and oh, we are officially in closed. Are we ready to go? We're good to go, awesome. We have come out of our closed session. We have a few motions that we need to uh address here, so twelve point one of our agenda. Councillor Stasiak would like to receive the report for information. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Perfect, eight and oh. Twelve point three, uh Deputy Reed Minz would like to direct administration to provide a support letter from Athabasca County as discussed. We're ready for the motion or for the vote, all those in favor? And any opposed? Eight and oh, thank you. Twelve point four, councillor Dowlock would like to direct administration to bring back more information to council as discussed. If we're all ready for that one, all those in favor? And I see any opposed? No opposed, okay, eight and oh. Twelve point five, councillor Stasiak would like to amend the twenty twenty-five budget infrastructure services professional fees for up to seventy thousand dollars for facility assessment as discussed and closed. If we're good to go, all those in favor? Any opposed? One, seven and one, thank you. And the last item, twelve point six, was Deputy Reed Minz would like to receive the report for information. All those in favor? And opposed? Seven and one. This officially adjourns our meeting at to twelve thirty-three, one thirty-three. Thank you very much.